The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 35468 Tea Time Circle, Sebring. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We're going to start the public hearing and the first thing on the agenda is the golf rate discussion. Jim?
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunil Lake Golf Club. We've had two budget discussions where we've talked about the increase in rates to the public fees and the membership fees. At the last budget meeting, after discussion, it was decided to bring back proposals which we have for a 3% increase to public fees and membership fees, which the public fee increases a little bit more than 3% since we rounded everything up. And also to bring back a 4% increase to the public fees and the membership fees and a 5% increase to the public fees and the membership fees. My proposal would be a 3% increase to the membership fees and the public fees. What that does is that adds $26,000 from the membership fees and $30,000 from the green fees to our budget, had we not done those increases. So those are already figured into the budget. The question that you have, if you actually are just analyzing the 3% increases as opposed to a 4% increase, as opposed to the 5% increases, at what level does your play start to drop off and how much does it drop off? And the industry best practices are to have gradual increases. That way you can actually measure the market better, whether it's for public play or for your membership. We haven't exactly done that since 2014. That was our last increase for our membership, where we have had a pretty consistent 2% or 3% increase since that to the public play. But my recommendation is to go with 3%. I believe what's going to happen at 4% or 5%, and I actually even worked up an example in my mind for 5%, so in a hypothetical situation, if we raised fees, whether it be for membership or for outside play, 5%. So say you were getting 100 players coming every day and you raised it 5%, and then you only got 90 players, you would actually get 5.5% less revenue. So your raise, if you raise it 5% and you lose 5% or more of play, you don't make any money. So you have to really kind of figure out what the tolerance is for your public play and your membership, where the raise is not going to affect your market share. And my belief is that that's at 3%.
Thank you, Jim. Who wants to start? Kurt, anything? Mark? Got any comment, Mark?
Sure. I mean, it's, at the last meeting, I kind of brought that up and I'm thinking now, you went back and looked at it and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you must have felt that you would lose that outside play and would not have the ability and maybe negotiate with some of the special groups, they might not accept it. And at the time, when I looked at it and said, because of the way it was set up, we originally had it as a 3% increase on memberships and across the board for all other play, but then the 4% and the 5% only were specific to the memberships. And I didn't feel comfortable that we would increase it only on the memberships, I felt it had to be across the board. But it was, once again, your decision as to whether or not you could generate that extra revenue at a 5%. And it sounds like you've kind of rethought some of this. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you rethought it and you said, maybe I can't negotiate with some of these groups, it's too great of an increase. And so, once again, you're coming back now with a recommendation, 3%, correct?
Correct. Yes, and I think, I mean, the point I believe is that you're reinforcing is if you lose your market share, whether it's your membership or whether it's your public play, you know, once your rate increase has your people leave, you know, membership or public, it's very difficult to get them back. So that's why a measured lower rate increase is a more logical approach.
And after that meeting, and I'm sure all of my colleagues here have received a number of emails from specifically our Canadian friends, and this is, of course, a little different impact on them than it is on us. And I did a quick calculation last night and looked at how many family memberships we had, as well as three-month and five-month memberships. The majority of the Canadians are, in fact, full memberships, family memberships. There's only a few three and five month. And the impact on them would be much, much greater. And I know that Larry did a survey three years ago, I think it was Larry, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Three years ago, when we came up with the one, three and five month. And that had definitely eroded our membership since that time. We did away, of course, with the one month. So the last thing I wouldn't like to see is, I don't want to erode our membership further, specifically our Canadians, since they're paying a premium. Most of them, in the emails that I received, were willing to look at a 3% and felt that that was the appropriate path to go. So that's my comments. I tend to agree that the 3% would be more than enough.
Larry, anything?
Yeah. I also got the Canadian emails, lots of them. One comment I'll make there is we don't set that rate. That is a worldwide exchange rate and we have nothing to do with that rate. And I understand if you lose 30% upfront, it hurts and it hurts bad. However, when you really look at the thing, it is still cheaper to be down here in the winter than it is in Canada. Our gas is cheaper, our housing is cheaper, our food is cheaper. Most of our amenities, everyday amenities that you need is cheaper in the United States by more than 30%. We have not taken a raise, this is into the third year, two years with absolutely no When I look at this, Jim, the, there's a lot of things here that doesn't change very much. You're afraid you're going to lose a lot of outside members. And I want to read something right off these sheets to you. Membership outside rates. November, on a 3% is $48, $58. I'm not going to read the summer rates because they're considerably lower. A 4%, now I read 48 and 58. On a 4% is 48 and 59. On a 5% increase, it is 49 and 59. So they're not going up hardly at all on outside. So whatever you think you're going to lose on outside play, that's out of the question. I mean, you're not losing it. It's less than a buck average. The difference between 3% raises your dues for a family membership, $127. A single membership, 62. A 4% raise that raises your family, $170 and $103. A 5% raises it, $212 and $126. Guys, the, our membership, the public has told us they want a better golf course. We've improved the fairways, we redid the tees, we've got some problems with irrigation that I guess we're going to address this year. They want a club, they want a bigger kitchen, they would like to have even a bigger clubhouse. Some of it is going to have to wait for a while, but I am truly in favor of a 5% raise. The least I'll vote for is a 4%, period. That's all I have to say.
Can I come? Yeah, I'd like to come back on the comment here. I think there's some validity in what Larry was saying about the Canadians coming down and being able to be, let's say, more affordable, they can be down here and things will last. But at the same token, these people are, they are homeowners down here, they are paying assessments down here, they're paying across the board on those assessments, they're also paying that additional money. And I totally, I understand how the economy works and how that 30% comes into play, a 32% because they're so dependent upon us for a lot of other things, specifically oil. All I'm trying to say is, I'm not sure I'm ready to roll the dice for 1% or 2% and lose a number of members because there, a lot of those people are on the cusp of saying, you know, "I can live with 3%, but you move it to 5 and I'm going to rethink this." And that's all I'm saying. And all of the other things you said, we have no control over. They can go down to Cody's, they can go down to 18 East or wherever, and they're not going to get a discount there, and they can't ask for a discount there. You know, one of the things that I really would like to get a feel from is, if Jim is going to lose the ability, that some of these groups, some of the special group rates, which they tout as bringing in a substantial amount of revenue, those groups that come in on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, if that extra dollar or two is going to make a difference to them, because if they turn around and say, you know what, we're going to go elsewhere, we've just lost that $60,000 or $70,000 in revenue that we've talked about so much in these last couple of board meetings.
As I understand it, from what he's said in the past, they negotiate each one of those group rates, and this is not affecting them. Is that right?
Well, it's going to affect it, but it's not, it's not an in stone raid. So the group rates go up every, basically, the nice thing about the public play that you brought out and that we've all seen is that if you're just trying to get 2% or 3% or 4% a year on a low fee, like a $25 summer fee or a $35 fee, you only have to go up a dollar or two to get, you know, that percentage for a green fee. So it's not that difficult, you know, to go up on a group of dollar. You got to go up, you got to pay another dollar next year, you got to pay another $2 around. So you can, you get your 3% or 5% pretty easily on the group.
What I would feel comfortable with though, Jim, and I'm going to say this before, you know, when the time comes to vote, whatever we vote on, 3%, 4% or 5%, that whatever comes forth from this board, be it 3%, or 4%, or 5%, that those are adhered to. Because there's no sense in establishing a rate if we're not going to adhere to them. I mean, that would be playing a game. And, you know, we've got to stop that. So whatever the rate is, it should be. You know, the group rates, you know, I fully understand you have to negotiate those because those are larger groups. The summer rates, that's a whole different ballgame, but I'm talking in the winter. So if we establish a rate of $55, I don't want to be sitting in the clubhouse when somebody comes in and gets a $50 rate or something. That's all I'm saying.
Right. So just to understand, so based on the group rate, so, or if you look at the off-the-street rate, so last year, the off-the-street rate, I believe, was $56. So anyone who came in and played, paid $56. The only time an off-the-street person would pay a different price than that would be like, specifically Sundays. We send out a coupon in the paper on Sundays for people to come in. But Monday through Saturday, somebody comes into the club, it's that set price. There's no, I mean, even currently now, there's no, you know, negotiating each day on a price. It's basically the set rates and the group rates and anything advertised in the paper.
Is your ad in the, that little shopper, whatever they call that little magazine, is that the same, is that, is that rate?
To be honest, I'm not sure of the exact ad you're talking about.
Talking about, what are they called, the, about a eight by five or six, coupon book?
In the coupon book?
Yeah.
I apologize, I'm not exactly aware of the rate in the coupon book. But I guess the point would be it's a set advertised rate, it's not, it's not a negotiable rate. Anybody who has that coupon can come in and use it.
Molly?
Well, I just say right up front that I'm against raising the fee, the members' fees. When I look at the numbers in here, and numbers that you've given me, Jim, about how many people we've lost in every membership category almost, just over two years, and who's taking a chance of losing others. I got all those emails, I got the phone calls about, well, my wife and I were going to join, but if there's a penny, she's not going to join, she's just going to pay green fees. And so, what are you going to gain by that? You know, I just, I just don't see that. I mean, I looked at the numbers, I just, I can't see it. There's other ways, if we would have to increase things, I did a thorough study on this and got the all the numbers and so forth. You're talking about charging someone $100 more a year or $200 more a year, when we got the lowest water rates in the district, and $1 will make up all that difference. 3,650 homes, it'll make up all the difference. And then we would still have the lowest rates. I don't know why we aren't looking at taking those water rates up, just the average in the area, just the average, instead of being the lowest. I don't know why we have to do the lowest. So I'm not voting for any raises in the memberships. And because otherwise, if we get in trouble, we can raise money. That's not my kind of deal, so that's what I'm saying.
Kurt, do you want to say anything?
Yeah. I guess my biggest problem is that we have less than 300 members and we have over 2,000 homeowners here. And every year, on average, the homeowners pay or donate, or whatever word you want to use, $750,000 to the golf, to make sure we have the best golf course, the best everything. And for not to do anything, when you're talking about $80 or $100, I just, I just have a problem with depending on residents that don't play golf to keep funding a habit, if you want to call it that, or a recreational thing that we participate in, and not raise it. As far as I'm concerned, it should be raised every year, just average cost of living and nothing else, just, but anyway, that's not what we're talking about today. So I guess if I had to vote for something, I would vote for the 5%. Because I just don't, I think we've gotten way out of whack with terms of what the homeowners pay and what the members pay. And I think our membership rate goes down every year because, not because of what the fees are. Keep in mind that right now, our family membership is like $4,200 a year. Highland Ridge is at $5,200 a year. Spring Lake is at $5,300 a year. So it isn't like we're pricing ourselves out of the market by any means. We've got the best facility, the best everything, and we're still underpriced by $1,000 with our competition. So I guess, now, those Canadian emails, they did bring up a couple of things. They said, why don't we have a six-month couples' membership, which I thought might be a good idea, and also a six-month single membership instead of a five-month. Originally, the five-month came about, Ron Wonderling and myself, when I was on the board previously, that we sat down, we kind of come up with this seasonal membership idea, thinking five months would cover the winter months, seven months would cover, but taking account the Canadians, that they're here almost six months, so maybe six months would be better than five months. So I would recommend we look at changing the five-month to six-month and obviously adjusting the price accordingly, and also institute a six-month couples' membership as well. So, but as far as rates go, I'm probably closer to the 5% than I am to 3%.
No comment.
Go ahead, Mark.
You know, I thought about the six-month as well. This might be a great idea. There are a lot of people that are here for five and six months. It's not because of government regulations that say you can't be down here, such as our Canadian friends, who are limited to the six months. So I looked at those numbers, and I don't have them with me because I didn't know this was the direction we were going to go. We would probably hurt ourselves badly if we did that because there are a tremendous amount of people that are here for six months that are within the States. And they would look at that, and I'm sure we would end up eroding the membership the same as we did when we instituted the three and five. Now, like I said, you'd have to do the studies. I did it on a spreadsheet. I, like I said, I didn't know we were going in that direction tonight. I even looked at, and this is not going to be a popular thing to say, but I even looked at and I said, gee, you know, if we look at the number of people that are here that are golfing, and we're all getting older, the 80, the rate for 80-year-olds is substantially lower than what it probably should be. Maybe we should be looking at adjusting, you know, if you're looking at a six-month membership, maybe we should be looking at adjusting all of these memberships along the line and a complete revamp of it. It's just a thought, there's a couple members that have even said to me, they're going to be 80, they're counting down the days, and they said, I would be willing to pay some additional money. So, I mean, maybe we should be looking at the whole program. I don't know, you're pretty familiar with Highlands. I've talked to them about family memberships. I don't know if they have a group rate over 80 or not. Do you know if they do?
I don't.
Yeah, I didn't. Do you know if they have?
I believe they do, yeah.
They do?
Yeah, they actually went the way they used to have a membership that was your age, plus how many years you'd been a member, but they did away with that a couple of years and just went to the standard over 80. In fact, when you looked at their membership packet a couple years ago, I believe that it looked just like ours. So they actually took our format and pumped the numbers into our packet, and they didn't have guest cards like we have guest cards, and then all of a sudden they had guest cards. So they've pretty much modeled everything around what we were doing, other than their prices are higher. And they're a little bit in a captive market out there. They know that the people who live there are not close to another golf course, and I think, plus, they're trying to make ends meet. So that's the reason they push their membership so high.
And here again, I don't know, I talked to them, I talked to all of the places around here just recently, in the last two months. And the reason I called Highlands, quite frankly, was the last time they updated their website was in 2015. And so I had to call and find out what kind of family memberships they had because they don't even bother to publish them. They said it's not worth publishing or updating their website, which to me doesn't sound like a very good marketing approach, but that's them.
Well, talking about Highlands Ridge, also, you know, our membership includes the driving range, the pool, the fitness center, the racket club. Highlands Ridge, you pay an extra $600 a year to use the driving range. So now that 52 goes to 58, and in time you add tax, you're well over $6,000 bucks and we're well under $5,000. And you still have the pool and all, so.
And I think some of the people are looking, that's why some of the people are looking to maybe joining over here.
Well, exactly my whole point.
So, I mean, you know, we're making it attractive to get some outside members, which would then increase our 300 members, you know, so we could bring in some extra revenue.
My point is $80 isn't going to sway them one way or the other.
But 5,200 versus 4,500 will maybe sway them.
Well, sure. But we're talking about rate increases here, and we're really talking about 80, 90 bucks or whatever it is. So you're saying if you raise up too much, they won't come? And I'm saying that isn't.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misstated it then. What I'm saying is that there are people already, they're not looking to leave Highlands because they're paying 5,200 now, and they feel that they're outpriced. They know that this is a better product over here, and they see what's happening over at their course. And quite frankly, if they're willing to come over here, you know, 4,500, 4,600, 4,700, it's a benefit for us, but, you know, I'm just saying, I think we have a good opportunity here to capture some of those members. It's just my personal feelings.
Okay, guys, I'm going to ask for the public to comment, and then we'll come back to you if you want to say something else, okay?
What's your thoughts?
My thoughts, I thought I made them last meeting that we had, but I'm willing to vote on 3% increase. I don't want a 4 or 5, but I will vote for 3% if you want my opinion. Public comment?
Would you like to have a public comment on golf?
Yes.
If you want to have a public comment over there.
Yes, yes. Would you want to come up, Dave?
I've got, I've got something I want to pass around. This isn't about the rate increase, by the way, this is about golf-related things in the budget.
No, this is about the rate increase.
This is about the rate increase only?
Yes, sir.
So then you're going to have a public comment after you go through the, you decide, you're not going to have any public comment on anything but the rate increase?
No, we're have public comment on anything we talk about. Okay?
So is this the time to talk about?
If you could, Dave, just talk about the memberships right now, and then you can, when we get done, you can come back up.
Okay, as long as I can come back up, because I've spent a little time putting this together. I don't, the only comment I have about that, I think 5% is a little overboard. I think 3% makes some sense possibly right now. I mean, we haven't had an increase in a couple of years. 5% on a family membership's another $250. It might make a difference in whether, I mean, you might lose therefore family memberships because of it, and I don't think it's something we ought to consider. So that's all I've got to say about membership rate increases.
Anybody else?
Charlie Shields, resident. I'm in favor of 3% also, but my criticism would be, you said, I think Supervisor McCullough said, we had, or somebody said that we hadn't had any raises in the membership in the past three years or so. Am I correct? Or maybe it was you.
14 and 15 was last rate.
See, that's what I see as the problem, is the board has an obligation to look at the future, not at jumping one this year and maybe not next year or whatever. You have five-year plan and you were going at 1, at 2, 2.5% or whatever it is, you would be keeping pace. But we're not choosing to do that. We go three years because we don't want to, you know, make anybody mad.
Let me answer that a little bit for you. A year ago, we turned down a raise, we talked about it, we talked about it very seriously. But we had a course a year ago in the fall, or a year ago, rate in the summer, if you remember right, that was in pretty poor condition. And at that time, after we had come through our spring and we'd really lost our fairways and whatever, that was the reason that we didn't raise a year ago, was because of the condition that we had the course in.
Yeah, but regardless, if you were coming in and looking at a five-year plan, not just 217, 218, and said, this is what we have to meet over the next five years, you'd have a better chance. Yeah, but regardless, if you were coming in and looking at a five-year plan, not just 217, 218, and said, this is what we have to meet over the next five years, you'd have a better chance. Mike Tom.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Wayne Benson, resident. Do you have the figures on, I'm 85 years old and I'll qualify for a reduction this year. Do you have any figures on the membership over eighty and over 85?
I don't have them with me.
Mark, you talked about maybe hitting the older people.
I can tell you the difference between a 3% and a 5% for 85. The 3% is 2,557 and the 5% is 2,607. The 4% is 2,582, so.
The difference?
It's less than $30 to go 4% and 607. It's $50 to go 5%.
Okay. The question I have is as I get older, I can't play as much golf, you know. Father time sets in. So, but, you know, that's fair, 3% is fair, I think. Even though I'm almost 90.
I'm guessing the, even at 5%, it would be, by the time you figure your, a family membership would be less than 50 cents additionally a round for you and your wife, which I think you'll find between the two of you, you play a couple hundred rounds.
Ray?
Ray Brooks, resident. Can you tell me what the average age of our membership is right now?
76.
Anybody?
76.
76, well, if it's that old or that up there, I think we really have to seriously look at the eighty-year-old deal that we gave everybody. I mean, pretty soon, everybody's going to be getting a deal except for very few of us. So, but in all seriousness, I think eighty, we may want to eliminate it. I don't know why we want it. And I know that makes a lot of people out here not very happy. But I would certainly think that's something we should put on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else?
Virgil A, resident. Kurt, you talked about wanting to raise it up on the golfers and not make the whole community pay the cost. It's my understanding this is a recreation community. I don't use a tennis court, I don't use a swimming pool or anything else, but I pay on it and I don't have a problem with that. But if without the golf course, what happens to our property values? Ron Darr said that it would drop 40% first day. So do they need to bear the whole thing? Not necessarily. But I think it should be shared throughout the community because the golf course is the main reason that we're, that and the other recreation is the reason that we're here. Plus, in the last four years, I've had a 0.5% cost of living raise. Right.
Anybody else? Okay, anybody up here got anything else to say about this? Go ahead, Dave.
Do we want the proposed, the three different proposed schedules all include the corporate rate? Do we want to have a discussion about the corporate rate and whether that's something we want to include and how that's going to work out or do we want to eliminate that? I had a conversation with Jim earlier this afternoon and we kind of talked about that some, but obviously this has already been, had already been printed. So I don't know if that's something we want to talk about now.
I think we should talk about it now.
We, I thought we discussed that at the last meeting. And Jim was going to investigate, I thought, a $9,000 or a $9,500 rate.
I guess I'd like to know what 8,000 represents.
Right. Yes, and before, I guess before we would get into what it represents, the discussion with David that sidetracked this, and I think you'd be better at explaining this, David, is the lack of any flexibility. Once you advertise a corporate rate, if you say it's for two people, one people, five people, there's no flexibility in changing the rate whatsoever. So I think, and Tanya was in the meeting also, and I think we all, I don't want to put words in other people's mouths, but it's very problematic to have a corporate membership when you don't have a market for the membership. So, because you don't have someone coming to you saying, I want this or I want that. So we don't know if they want a corporate membership for two people or like this, this is a corporate membership for four people or six people. And from my understanding from David, which was enlightening today when I talked to him, whatever you offer has to be exact and it has to be exactly the same for everyone. So if you offer a four-person corporate membership for 8,000 and three people show up, you don't have a corporate membership for them. But maybe you can expound on it, David.
I don't get the reasoning behind that. I mean, you go to clubs that do have corporate memberships, it's so many people for so much money and that's what it is. Why do you need the flexibility?
I've had, yeah, I've had corporate memberships in other venues and we paid a flat rate for X amount of seats at that event, okay, throughout the season. You know, most of them were sporting events, I mean, be it basketball, football, whatever, hockey. And, you know, it was X seats, four seats, 20 grand, whatever it was. If three people showed up, fine. If two people showed up, fine. If some corporate comes in and says they want a three-seat corporate, no, we don't offer that. We, you know, we have a four-seat package. I don't know, maybe it's different in golf.
No, no, there isn't. But the main thing is that it has to be spelled out and whether or not we want to offer something as low as a four-person corporate rate or if we want to make it as six or eight or 12 or 16, whatever the amount it is. Because once a corporate rate is established, any corporation would be able to take advantage of that. Which means if four members want to go out and form a corporation, they would be able to get an $8,000 membership for the four of them. Rather than, you know, a family count or anything like that. And so that's the question is, we're going to, if we want to offer a corporate rate, what is, do we want to tier it? So if it's O to four, you know, it's one rate. If it's five to 12, it's a different rate. If it's, you know, 13 to 16, it's a different rate. Or how we would, if we would want to offer one at all. Because at this point, I mean, my understanding, whether we don't have, we've never had, you know, any sort of corporate interest. Maybe it's because we didn't have one, but I'm sure that any corporation has come forward to request to negotiate one.
More importantly, how do we come up with the $8,000 rate then? Where did that come from?
Before I spoke with, based on the last meeting, we were looking to discount to a corporation to have multiple people on the list. So, you know, in talking to David, we were going to propose a four-person corporation would pay $8,000 to be a member at the club and then bring it up today for discussion. But when we got into the discussion of the difficulties, because my perception was that was going to, you know, set a benchmark. And then if somebody had five people, you could make it 10,000. Or if, you know, six people, it could be 12,000. But David explained that we don't have that type of flexibility. Now, we could just, and this is a question, but I think that's what we came up with today. We could say that corporate rates were available and then any corporation that came to us, we could bring it to the board based on that corporation and the board would have to approve it at each, at each meeting?
No, I don't think that's the way to go. I think, first of all, we don't have anybody partaking in a corporate rate because we don't have one. And maybe we'll never get one, but you'll never get one unless you tell somebody you got one. So my point is, is $8,000 for four people is too low, number one. And I don't think you need all this cross-the-gamut type approach. You just say four people, it's $10,000, period, that's it. Just like the hockey seats, it's no different. And if they want one for five, tell them they got to buy two corporate rates then.
With that $8,000 rate, if you negotiate four people and an $8,000 rate, it's less than a five-month membership per person. And I kind of think I know where this came from and where it's going and, you know. I'm not sure I like this.
Should we make that a $10,000 rate?
That would be much better.
Now, when you talk about a corporate rate, also, do they have to designate four people? Or is it any four people from that, does a hospital get a joint for $8,000 and send four different people every week?
No, it'd be the same four people.
Same four people. All right, and now how you going to define corporation? If there's four guys right back there, if they say we got a business now chasing flies and we're incorporated?
The definition was a registered corporation in Florida.
LLC or something like that.
It would be either in Florida or whatever, as long as it's an active corporation. Not although that we could really distinguish. That's the problem is by the, you know, by the requirements, we have to offer the same rates to all users of the same class. Period. So, I mean, if they're corporations, whether they are, you know, I arguably believe you can make a distinguished corporation an LLC, but I have a hard time arguing that. But I'd say the main thing with that is it has to be active. As long as you're an active, whether you're incorporated in Delaware or Florida or Georgia, as long as you're an active corporation. I say that we have to, you know, offer that rate.
But even $10,000 sounds awful cheap.
It would be plus cart fee. I'll take it.
Well, really, we're talking about what the fee would be. I mean, right now, a family membership per person, if you're looking at the 3% rate, is what, $2,175? So at 10,000, that'd be $2,500 a person. And you're getting a four-person group instead of a two-person group. Doesn't mean there's any logic there, it's just, you know, it matters how you look. If you're comparing it to four individual memberships, then it is quite a discount because those are 3,150. So there you have a $650 per person membership. But you're trying to draw in the company, I think, is the idea. Is you're, in a corporate membership, you're trying to, like the original suggestion was almost that the fourth person was free. You know, you pay the rate for three people and the fourth person was free. But quite honestly, I don't have a specific idea or even an inclination for the corporate rate. It's just my opinion, I'm not that interested in it based on the lack of demand for it.
Dave, can we just put it on our sheet, corporate rates available and work this out later?
Yeah, and actually, because based on the requirements for publishing, we're probably not going to actually vote on what to publish until the 21st meeting because even if we made a decision tonight, we couldn't get it published fast enough to vote for it to be on the agenda for the 21st meeting. So as long as we make a decision, in my opinion, that we make a decision by the 21st meeting, we have to publish by August 10th or 15th. We would have to publish by August 15th to make it to August 25th meeting. So as long as we have a decision no later than August 10th, you know, preferably earlier, make sure there's no, you know, issues with publication.
As far as I understand, the calendar is, we're not going to have another budget discussion till August 21st or 3rd or whatever that lasts.
We've got our July 21st meeting coming up. So that would be my recommendation, is that we make a, we don't have to make a decision tonight on what to publish, but we should make a decision at the 21st meeting on what to publish, you know, to be decided at the August.
Do you want to do that, guys, or do you want to?
Do you want to do that or you want to make a motion to what we want to?
Yeah, I don't care.
Anyone wants to can make a motion.
I would make a motion. Are we done with public discussion?
All right. Well, just have a public comment on the corporate.
If you look at a single membership, it's 3,100 bucks. So times four is 12 grand. So if you make it 10 grand for four people, that's giving them a discount.
Can I make this comment on that? Regardless of what you come up with, the corporation that I work for, we had a corporate membership at Cromwell, TPC Courts in Connecticut, okay? Four people, any four people, but they had to pay $100 every time they played. Now, the greens fee at Cromwell was like 250 or, I forget what it was. So, I mean, there's a balance there and I think you should do that.
Okay, hey Kurt, you got anything else? Okay, Larry, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion. I would make a motion that we raise both the public and the membership 4%. And do I need to exclude that corporate membership out of what I'm talking about?
No, you can, we don't have to exclude it right now because we won't publish this. What we'll do is if it's, if 4% of us gets voted on, we'll calculate that, bring it back. And like I say, I think we've pretty much, we can bring back and revisit the corporate issue on the 21st if you want to. And potentially the, you know, the six-month issue, if that's something you want to talk about, we can do that on 21st as well.
I make a motion for a 4% increase across, straight across the board.
Do we have a second?
Outside.
You want to, Chrissy, do you want to call with this?
There's no hurry, we can, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion by the board or public comment?
Any more public comment?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edel?
No.
Supervisor Kehl?
No.
President Gilpin?
No.
Probably do an emotion for 5% when you're in time.
Do we have any more motions?
Well, I'll make a motion that we increase public and membership fees by 3%.
Do we have a second?
He's sitting over there, gum-founded. Yes, I'll second that.
Any discussion more? Public comment?
Just a question, Tom Costi, just a question for David. Is it required that we just have one public hearing on rates?
Yes.
Just one? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chrissy.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edel?
No.
Supervisor Kehl?
Yes.
Supervisor Swoll?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, there's anything else we want to discuss on golf here, guys? While we're here, I know Dave's got some comments. Okay, we'll go to Omar first then.
So, good afternoon. Today I provided a brief presentation regarding the budget. So far, we've done two workshops. Today's presentation is going to be just in a generic overview. We really won't get into the details per line item. If anyone has any questions on line item by line item questions, they can go on the website and pull the actual workshop documents or come see Southie District Office. So just to start, we'll talk about some of the budget summary. We'll go over overall, kind of where we break down comparison to last year. We'll go into each fund and then we'll look at our financial condition as of currently. So the first slide, budget summary, this is our overall budget summary in comparison to last year. Our 2016-2017 budget was $12.3 million, which included the $1.7 million that we allocated for the capital, the maintenance building. This year's proposed budget for 2017-2018 is $12.7 million, which includes $1.4 million for an RV storage facility and a clubhouse kitchen renovation project. Out of that, $12.7 million, 9.5 million is going to operating expenses, $667,000 is going to capital, and then out of reserves, we're pulling about 2.6 million. If we were to balance our budget with no reserves, just for presentation purposes, a balanced budget is somewhere around 10.1 million. So this year, we're pulling 1.9 million out of reserves in order to balance our budget this year. So just going and looking at each fund individually, I've included this kind of a bar graph. So just going and looking at each fund individually, I've included this, kind of a bar graph. The first bar graph is the general fund. It shows 3.3 million that we use for operating expenses, $517,000 goes to capital within our operating revenues, and then we're pulling another $512,000 out of reserves. So right now, to balance our budget, ideally, to balance our budget, we wouldn't have that 512 there. I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, it's just an ideal situation, you wouldn't want to be paying for operating expenses out of reserves. Our utility fund, we have $2.1 million going for operating expenses, $150,000 we're pulling for capital projects with no reserves, and then we have $300,000 coming out of reserves to take care of some of the projects that we've allocated there. Now, inside the 2.1, or 2.1 million for operating, there's 548 going into the Euro fund to replenish our Euro. And then lastly, the golf funds, 3.9 million going to operating, and 390 is their capital purchases request this year. This next slide, I get a lot of questions from residents asking, "Where do my assessments go? Where do I, what do I pay for? What does the 673 pay for?" So I wanted to provide just a, kind of a visual graph to show where the money's being allocated this year. The overall budget for the general fund's $4.4 million. That does not include any capital projects, so that does not include the 1.4 million. 31% is going to roads and drainage, there's another 20% going to golf transfers, and then it continues to go down from there, going to administration, recreation, finance, and so forth. So you can kind of see a visual of where we are allocating your funds this year.
Hey, Omar?
Yep.
I'd like to make a comment on that first line there. That's 1.3 million that we spend on roads and drainage.
In that department, correct.
Exactly. But my point is, is that if the district wasn't here, the county would have to take care of that stuff. And the amount of money that we spend to take care of our own roads and our own drainage, and then the county comes to us and wants us to pay 50 grand to pay Schumacher, just to me, they got the cart before the horse, or something's wrong with this whole picture. If you take a look at a nine-year or 10-year span, that's 14, 15 million dollars, it's just ridiculous. So I just want to make that comment. I just think the county takes a lot and doesn't give us much, and we do a pretty good job here of maintaining what we have and our property values and everything else.
Yeah, that's a good observation. I like to tell residents, sometimes they don't understand how much it really does cost to maintain these roads and do some of the drainage projects, but it is costly, 1.5 million isn't just a small chunk of change. So we are prioritizing our funds and making sure that we're addressing their needs and Next is the utility fund. Kind of just did a pie chart for you guys here. Overall budget this year is $2.6 million. 65% of that goes to utility operations, which is salary, staff, you know, supplies. Customer service is $230,000, which is 9%. Reserves is 21%, so out of all the money, 21% we're putting back into reserves through Euro, and then the last 5% is contingency. Golf fund, I provided a breakdown to see where they're allocating their funds. Their overall budget's $4.3 million, with 62% going to golf operations, 29% going to restaurant, 9% going to capital purchases, and then they have $10,000 for contingency. Next, we'll go into the financial condition. We'll talk about some of our, how much cash we have on hand in comparison to our reserves. A lot of times, we toss around the idea or the concept, fund balance, and, you know, what does that really mean? And it's kind of just, you know, in the private sector, we use retained earnings, or a different term, and government's a little bit different, but it's just the money that we've accumulated over the years. So as of right now, the GFOA recommends that, for a general governmental fund, we keep at least two months of operating revenues or expenses on hand. So we want to show what that would look like for Sun and Lake. And it's not a one-size-fits-all recommendation, it's just their bare minimum standard that they want all their government entities to abide by. Cash versus reserves, so as of 9/30/16, our cash on hand for the general fund was $4.2 million. Our reserves were $4.3 million, so they're pretty close in comparison. Unassigned reserves, about $4 million. Management, we talked about it a little bit, and we recommend about six months of operating expenses on hand. This would be worst-case scenario, if everything were to stop, no assessment revenue coming in, no community center rentals, just everything kind of standstill, we'd have six months of operating expenses, we'd be able to survive for six months with $2 million. So it leaves us about $2 million to spend. This year, we've already budgeted $1.4 million out of that $2 million that we recommend. And that's just for the general fund, that doesn't include any utility reserves or any other reserves. For the utility fund, as of 9/30, our cash on hand was $4.8 million, and our reserves were $4.5 million, with only $640,000 being unassigned. We expect that $4.5 million to go down about $1 million this year because of the money for the maintenance building coming out of the Euro reserves. And lastly, I provided just a visual chart, just of our cash flows over the, through the year. You can see the major spikes come in November through March, when we get our, most of our assessment revenue, and then it trickles down all the way through October. But you can see, it's pretty consistent year over year, we can pretty much track where we're going to be as far as cash flow at any given point throughout the year. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. I looked at our investments, of our reserves, and stuff like that, and even talked to you about that. Are we doing anything to try to make more off that money in the reserves than what we're doing? Do we have a funding, counselors, do we have a company?
Right now, our investments are in certificates of deposit, so we're very conservative in what we've invested in. TD Bank has off, you know, I think the rates are the same in our operating accounts. We also have a SBA Prime Fund, which is through the state of Florida, which we have a very minimal amount of money, but our CDs are, we have staggered CDs, so we have a highest being a 60-month CD, then we have a 48-month, and so that's really all we do. We don't do anything aggressive, there's no risk in what we invest in. There is some risk with the SBA, but we're looking into that right now, but we only have maybe $500,000 in the SBA.
Not even.
Not even that, okay.
That was just a.
So we don't have any investment advisors, we're very conservative of what we invest in. Interest rates, we're seeing interest rates go up a little bit than what they were two, three, four years ago. I mean, CDs, quarter of a percent, I mean, that's all the interest we could, you know, receive, even through our operating accounts, but we're seeing that go up a little bit, so.
You mean a quarter of a percent improvement?
Well, I was just saying.
What's the CD paying now?
It depends on term.
Yeah.
90-day could be 60 basis points, a year could be 1% maybe.
So we're looking.
It just depends, too, are you putting in a quarter of a million dollars, a half of a million?
Right.
It's going to depend, but 1% is probably about your max, 1.18. So.
Our budget in the general fund is about $20,000 in interest revenue.
In the general fund, $20,000, we have another 25 coming from the utility fund.
Utility fund, so you can see.
We generate about $50,000. If we allocated our funds a little bit different, we could probably push it at 60, 65, but...
Yeah, we talked about that, because I know, you know, if you're making less than 1%, you know, we're losing that.
Oh, you're making more, 1%.
So, like, I know the savings is 0.5%, things like that. Well, I'm just bringing that up, I just, I saw that, talked to Omar about it. He told me, "Go home, wife, he'll take care of it."
Okay, we can have a public comment on just about anything you want to talk about.
I'll try not to take too much time.
Did you say try?
I'll try. I got to pass out here. And I'll try to talk at the same time. This is to clarify some questions I had earlier on, and this was concerning the golf budget and benefits and pay rates and costs that the board's got every, should know, should know about, and I, I know you guys got a string of emails that I passed around, back and forth between Tanya and myself and you guys, and it has to do with, it has to do with, started off with a question about benefits, and Casper's given the free golf, actually, to their, that's where it got started, to their employees, and so when I asked about the question, and I asked about, "Do we know what these people are being paid," and so on and so forth, and Tanya sent me an email and said, clarified it, she said, "Billy Casper Golf has exclusive right to fix their own compensation and fringe benefits for employees as stated in Paragraph 4A in the management agreement." And I was part of this contractual thing when I was on the board, and I thought, "My goodness gracious." I beat myself up for a couple of days, and I thought, "How can the world, how in the world can we give a free check, a blank check regarding the main portion of this budget? It just doesn't seem right." So after I beat myself up a little bit, I got to looking at, into the body of the contract, and she was right with this Section 4A on the employees, as far as, as far as pay rates and so on and so forth, but on page six, it talks about annual budgets and programs. And I underlined what I thought was important, and this ties back into this Paragraph 4A on employees, "An annual operating budget, including revenues and operating expenses and labor burden, to include rates of pay, incentive or commission structures for each department of the club." So that's a requirement that Billy Casper has to do every year, and it has to be a comparison to the annual operating budget in the meeting preceding year. So it talks about rates of pay, it talks about all of that stuff. Further down in this paragraph, it says, "A policy and procedure outlined for the club, including without limitation, operating policies, proposed hours of operation, policies related to complimentary golf course, and club use by the owner's representative and employees." And they're talking about complimentary, they're not talking about a benefit. Tanya said they don't have any wage information or benefit information, but on page seven, actually on page seven at the top of this page, it ties into what I just said, in bold type, it says, "Owners shall have the final approval and final decision-making authority over the annual budget and the program." So if we're not, you guys aren't getting that information, I mean, how can you control cost if you don't know what the costs are? And if they say that they can't give you that information, that's baloney. The contract says they have to, it's a requirement. And as far as employee benefits, on item, on Paragraph 3, it said, "Benefits will be limited to vacations, sick pay, medical insurance coverage, and 401K plan." So there's your benefits. I just wanted to bring it to light, because if they're not, if they're not given that information, and we don't know, in other words, if I'd ask you what our general manager makes, and somebody says, "I can't tell you because that's privileged information," that's not right. The contract says that you have to, they have, you have to give that to this board every year so that they can see what people are paying. They can't control cost. If you give them a blank check, you can't control cost if you don't know what the costs are. And these rate increases are okay, but if you don't know what the costs are, the expenses are the thing that's causing rate increases and things like that. So I think that's a big portion of it. Let me ask a question to Omar. Does this, this is back on the regular budget, does this proposed budget have any assessment increase in it?
No.
It does not? It does not, no, that's good. The digital sign, that's not part of this budget?
What? I didn't hear.
Is the digital sign part of this budget, or is it not, is separate? Okay, then I won't mention anything about that. I do have something to say about the RV boat storage proposal. I think it's a mistake. I know, I know there was a survey that came out, and I asked a question, well, how many responders we had to the survey, because I know there was a question about that RV, RV storage area on the survey, and I think Tanya told me, and I've got an email here somewhere, said there was 125 responders, 63 said they would be interested in it, 62 said that they wouldn't, they would not be, but only 22 of those responders had a boat or a RV. I think it's, I think, I think it'd be nice, but I think, I think it's pure and simple, special interest. I think there's a few people that maybe want it, I don't think it's something that, I mean, I don't know if anybody's doing any, any type of ROI on it, or how many users we're anticipating using the service, who's going to manage the service and at what cost.
That's five minutes, Mr. Hobson.
Pardon?
That's five minutes.
Thank you. I could have used some of this time on that other, the other... Anyway, I think that the story, boat storage area is pure and simple, a special interest in a select few, and I don't think it should happen. I have some other comments, but since I'm...
I'll be in my.
No, that's okay. I'm done. Let me ask one more question. We never have had a, had a attorney at a budget meeting before, it never was necessary because they should not have any input on it. This is the first year I ever saw an attorney for years at a budget meeting. Pretty expensive timekeeper.
You got a comment, Lloyd?
Well, I was just, about the attorney being at the meeting, he's here to give us advice as to what's right and wrong, and it may have paid out in the past if other board members would have paid attention to what the attorney said to do.
In a normal workshop situation, David has not participated. I've asked him to be here tonight because we were going to talk about golf rates, and as a public hearing, I thought it was important enough for him to be here tonight.
Okay, Tom?
Tom Costy, resident. Last, I think, Thursday night, the county public hearing on their budget occurred, and they were, the county commissioners were happy to give anybody who wanted to speak as much time as they wanted to take. I've never heard Ross Macbeth call time on anybody speaking at the county commission meetings, and I listen to him religiously. That's, I guess, a minute of my time. I noticed in the budget that I think we've got 1.25 miles of road to be resurfaced this year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And a parking, and a section of the parking lot over here by the clubhouse. We've got 97 miles of road in the district, that I remember, and it's pretty given that asphalt pavement lasts, an average is somewhere between 50 and 20 years before it has to be If you just do the math on that, if it's 20 years, we should be resurfacing five miles of road every year to keep the roads in consistent condition. So evidently, we're on attack now that we are allowing our roads to crumble. We're planning on letting a certain percentage of the roads in the district to crumble, because we're not going to keep up with 97 miles of road and keep them in their passable condition by only doing one and a quarter miles per year. Also, I think the road rating that's in the packet, did I see that the plan this year is to resurface Urbino and Capri? I think they just got resurfaced when, in the last few years, did they? If I remember correctly, and I've driven them, they look like they have. I did want to mention that Edgewater over here looks like it's... Uh, I did want to mention that Edgewater over here looks like it's, uh, it's, when you, especially during a rain, you'll see that there are areas where potholes are forming on Edgewater, uh, right near the, between the intersection at Sunrise and, uh, and the entrance into the clubhouse area on the bend right up the road here. Last year or the year before, we, we lowered our standard for the condition of the roads from what it had been for years at a rating of 60. There's a rating system that the asphalt industry uses for analyzing the condition of asphalt roads, and it was recommended by district staff that we lower that from 60 to 50, and it was said that it would be okay, and you folks agreed that, yeah, it would be okay. We're spending a lot of money on a golf course. I think we might have some of our priorities a little bit off if we're not going to take care of our roads. I really think it's important for a local government, that's one of the primary responsibilities is to maintain the roads. And I don't, I don't think we're paying enough attention to it. The other thing that, uh, I've talked about a couple of years ago is the fact that, uh, we know, we knew in 2010 that we were about to hit the wall in terms of being required by EPA to start planning for a serious expansion of our sewage treatment facilities. We know that if we started today, it would be five years before we would have a seriously expanded sewage treatment facility. The county is, I think, suggesting that we help market, what do they have now, maybe over a thousand lots that they're going to be trying to sell, um, pretty soon, and we don't have the sewage capacity to handle it. We're spending, uh, we, from, from a previous study, we know that to expand our current facilities, we're talking, uh, to their maximum, with the room that we have, we're talking $4 million, and if we were to go to a complete new facility, which is what the, if we were starting from scratch, we would certainly have a common facility for the entire area, and we wouldn't have it up on US 27, it would be in kind of a remote place. That, in 2010, the cost of that was somewhere between 10 and 14 million dollars. And that's what this utility repair, replacement and improvement fund is set up to accumulate funds so that we can do that when it becomes necessary. We've probably got over a thousand improved lots right now that the district has without going into any new areas. I'm talking about, we've got 70 or 80 empty lots in Manor Hill, uh, over on the, around the outside of, uh, the front line of Deer, on, to the west, there's, I don't know, there's probably four or 500 empty lots that are fully improved out there, sitting there waiting for somebody to come in and put a house on it. We couldn't have, we couldn't fill them today. We don't have the, we don't have the sewage treatment facility, capabilities to handle it. And we have not started any kind of a study or any kind of a plan or any kind of engineering is not underway to address these needs in the future.
That's five minutes.
Um, the, uh, and I just, I just think that sewage treatment, the handling of roads and drainage are the primary responsibility of a local government. Now, we've got also, we've got amenities for recreation, but to put those ahead of the basic needs of a community, I think is short-sighted for any board. Thank you.
I will, uh, second George Puffenberg, resident. I'll second what Tom said about the roads and the wastewater situation. I don't know, maybe the general manager knows. Has Poston done a recent, uh, study on our wastewater situation as to location, if we had to build a new one? There's a plan shouldn't be in place when you get 60% of them?
We have a study, we did, we did that internally.
Who did the study?
Internally, we did the study.
Who did, who we?
Uh, Mr. Griffin did the study. He did a water and wastewater study. I have it in my office, it's about 300 pages.
Yeah, could I get a copy?
Okay.
Just for my own information. Do you know what the percentages we're at right now?
I didn't, I can't hear you.
I say, what percentage are we of our licensed amounts? If we're licensed at 700,000 gallons, which what that plant is licensed for, are we at 400,000 per day, 300,000, do you know?
I, I don't. I don't have the information in front of me.
Well, that's important because EPA, Florida EPA says, "Soon you get to this amount, Tom's right, you have to have plans in place." The other issue is the question on Europe. The three, where's Omar?
Omar, uh, 548,000 goes to Europe this year, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And what will that bring the total amount to in that fund?
The Europe has approximately 2.5 million dollars in it?
Now.
Right now.
So that would, 2.5 million.
Give or take.
If that happens. I don't think, that's now an unrestricted fund, isn't it? There's no restrictions on the board use of that money?
It's still classified as restricted.
For what purpose?
Capital purchases.
Yeah, all capital, not for the utility replacement, as the original design was. Well, that was my point. My point is, that fund was set up for what Tom Coster was telling, but to cover that issue if it ever came up. An issue is going to come up maybe in about three years or five years, but it's going to happen. And, uh, the last study I saw was we had land available out off Schumacher, between Schumacher and Cortez, we're just going to build a master plant. I think we own most of it, but there's, uh, space there to build it. Somebody needs to look at it. The only other thing I would say, you know the 1.4 million, what the numbers are for restaurant renovation and for the RV? How, how's the 1.4 broken down?
1.2 is allocated for the clubhouse and 200,000 for the RV storage.
The 1.2, was that done, does the board request that or did Casper request that? In other words, who, who determined we needed to do these things?
I, I can answer, Bud.
Yeah, it's a pretty simple question, actually.
I, I know it, one time I asked for a, uh, clubhouse, uh, expand, or a kitchen expansion, and two, three months later, we got a clubhouse renovation. That's all I can tell you.
Say that again, you asked what and go what?
For a kitchen expansion, because I thought we needed to expand the kitchen.
Who'd you ask?
I said it at a board meeting.
Oh, okay. You made a general comment, we should expand the kitchen.
Yes, while I asked for it.
And then you've got a number, a few months later, 1.2 million?
Yeah, so I, I don't think the board's kind of been unfairly tasked with that because we didn't ask for a, that, that wasn't really what we asked for, and we've got a lot of blame for it.
Well, my only point is two things. When I, at the last meeting, I spoke to, I said, "You look at things for need." So if there's a valid need, that's what the board ought to look for. Now, a valid need says, "Yeah, we simply don't have enough room to feed the people we have, and we're losing revenue." The other issue is, well, we simply don't have enough space to prepare the meals we think we can sell daily. I don't see that one of those as a factor yet. Now, the restaurant we have now was designed that way. That was a mistake. It was designed that way in the mid 2002, 2003, when NRPL gave us $2 million on, in their contract to help pay for a new restaurant, or clubhouse, not restaurant. The board made several decisions at that time. One was, the 19th hole would never be closed to members because of weddings, anniversaries, special events, because it got to be a real controversy with members. Every time they go, "There's a special event today, the 19th hole is closed, we're going to serve beer in the shack across the street, we need a table and chair set up." So that was, it was designed that way. If you want to have a wedding, we had a catering kitchen. I think the catering kitchen is probably still there. It's going to have to be catered. The district would always be open in the 19th hole for golfers to come in, want to get a sandwich, want to get a steak, it's going to be similar to a grill room. That was the intent. So there's no mistake made, it's the way it was designed. I don't think there's a board member here, maybe Kirk, because he's been around, lived on my tan just quite some time before you built your house. You remember the old candlelight, where we judged our success on how much we lost as compared to the previous year, as much as $300,000 a year. And it was a controversial issue with most of the members. They come at the busiest times, they've got a wedding lined up for Saturday, the clubs closed. That's why we designed it, we said, "Well, the restaurant business, we're going to service the golf members, that's our first priority." And my only issue is, if we end up spending a million dollars, justify it and make someone By responsible, I mean, he must have a valid reason to do it, to say, "Well, I think we can increase revenues by 40%." Okay, then if they don't do it, let's get some, uh, give a piece of, piece of action from the people who really want it. The members, golf members, paid for course number three, the golf members paid for course number four. They paid $360 a year for 10 years. We finished paying for three, then we went to four. The general public didn't pay that, golfers paid it in addition to our fees. I paid $3,000 initiation when I came here and paid for both courses and didn't object at all because I used them, so I'd help pay for them.
That's five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, got a couple of other things, but, you know, I can say now it doesn't really matter.
Bud, I can, uh, I can tell you, I don't think that you can worry about the board spending 1.2 million on a expansion, so, go ahead, Wayne.
Wayne Benson. Tanya, um, you talked about our reserve and CDs, is that correct?
Yes.
What's the number? How much do we have in CDs?
Uh, 3 million to 3.5 million, I don't have exact, but about 3.5 million.
Oh, and our interest on that is 1% or less?
No, it, it depends on the, the term of the CD. The, the longer-term CDs have more of an interest rate.
Yeah, I understand.
So 60-month is going to have the largest. Uh, we, we, uh, we brought that to the board years ago and the board approved us to use TD Bank because TD Bank was the highest interest rate for, for our, um, local market.
What do you think the long-term rate is? Any idea?
You mean the 60-month?
Yeah, 60-month, is that what you got?
That is the longest-term CD that we have, is a 60-month. We don't have anything longer than that.
Uh, I was in the insurance business and CDs and all that, and we go back to 1952 when the interest rates were, on CDs were 1% or below. And you had, you don't have a financial advisor, you said?
We don't, I mean, we're limited by Florida statutes of what we can invest in. Our investments are very limited. We don't have an advisor, we, we don't...
That might hear my comment.
We don't go into, to the market and invest in, you know, airlines and other things. We just can't do that as a government. We are limited to what we can invest in.
So you need liquidity when you, probably?
Yes, yes.
Because that's a, you know, to me, that's, I haven't, I have, I don't have words for that, so. Okay, but you're regulated, yes, to...
Well, we're, we're, yes, I mean, we can't...
The board couldn't shop that or anything like that. The CD, even the CDs, you ought to be able to get a better interest.
We shopped the CDs, we reached out to six different banks.
Okay.
And we, we already banked with TD Bank through our operating accounts, and TD Bank was the highest interest rate for the CDs that we were looking for at the time, but that's been about three, three and a half years ago, maybe four.
You might want to look into that, you know, things are bouncing back and, but I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Tanya?
Do they regulate bonds as well, or can we look at bonds?
Bonds, I think government, government bonds, we could invest in. I believe that is one of the authorized investments, but I'd, I'd have to pull this, pull our policy. Our policy mirrors Florida statutes, so if y'all are interested in looking into other, a few other options, we can certainly entertain that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, if we're narrowing it down, right now, we're focused on CDs and everybody knows that they don't pay very well and haven't for a very long time, but I also understand that you said we're, we're governed by the, the state, but I'm just wondering, the state, I would think, would allow you to invest in bonds within the state, you know?
Then you could get a beer or a bottle.
Right, yeah, that's right. I mean, and they, they don't do too badly.
Go ahead, sir.
Look into it.
Scott Semrell, resident, uh, two comments for you. One, with this RV storage, I've never understood why you would want to get into a business, that if you go out the front gate, there's five of them, and why we want to bring that locally in here. I think that's just a waste of money. And I would agree that it's kind of, someone has some self-interest going there because there's just, you can go turn right, there's bay, they all offer storage for RVs and boats, there's really no reason for it. Second comment, I would be, I do agree with the board, five minutes, because as someone who has conducted many meetings, five minutes should be enough, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment about the sewage plant, and I remember a couple of years ago, uh, the county engineer, which was our engineer at the time, Gator, said that our sewage plant was capable of handling another 1,000 homes. And, and I, so I put the math to that, and I said, "If we build two homes a week, it takes us 10 years to, to hit 1,000 homes." So, uh, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Coste as far as planning goes, but as far as urgency goes, if that number is true, Highlands County doesn't have a labor force that could build two homes a week, so, um, I, I don't understand why everybody's so upset about our sewage plant, that's all.
Any other public comment?
Kurt, I think it's the location of the plants. Unit, the, the plant on, in unit 23 is, was, is almost capacity, uh, you know, in peak, peak times. This, the plant, Julian did a study several years ago, and it was, it was like 75% capacity in, you know, three or four months of, of the year, uh, and that's when we were talking about pumping, pumping from this plant over to that plant.
We're talking about an interconnect, and that's, that's in a future plan.
It's a location of plants and what's tied into this plant versus what's tied into that plant. This plant, this, the newer plant up here's got plenty of capacity, this plant here does not.
Well, I think in, in her planning, her long-range planning, she has a, a plant interconnect figured into that, which...
Yeah, we talked about that two, three years ago. I think it was, at that time, $50,000 to, uh, to pump it from one plant to another.
We, we have it in the long-term plan, I don't know if it was 50,000, I think it should be more.
There's a map and everything, yeah.
But we are, it is on our, in our radar, and we are going to look into that further.
Well, I think that's the problem. I think overall, we got, we got capacity, but we don't have capacity the way, the way it's, it's split right now.
Any other public comment?
For capital improvements? Yeah, there is.
Yes, it's in the budget.
I can't hear him.
No. He's asking if do we have a five-year capital plan, that, yes.
I'm just trying to understand these numbers a little bit better on, on these two sheets, Omar. So if I'm reading this right, the budget is about $10,072,900.
No. So the first worksheet, that's $14 million. That's, that was the proposed budget as of workshop number two. That's as it stands as of the last meeting.
That's the proposed budget.
The $10 million worksheet is just a visual, that would be a budget that had no reserves at all across the board, that's what it would look like. No capital projects, no, no reserve use, just a straightforward budget.
That's a straightforward budget. So we took, we actually take in around $10,072, and if we only wanted to spend that amount, this is what it would look like?
Correct.
And then the $12,797, that is a number that comes from...
It backs out the 1.4, which is accounted twice. It's, it's accounted for in the general fund, because we're moving the money from reserves, and then it's accounted for again in the capital improvement funds.
All right.
So I back that out.
And what these guys have to decide is, do they like the 14,197, or are they going to try and reduce it to the 10,720?
Some work closer.
Get more closer.
Correct.
And when does that take place?
Through continuation of workshops. We should have the third one, is it going to be in August?
We, I'm not sure yet. We, we need to have a budget discussion on July 21st, okay? We, we definitely need to. There are some issues we need to discuss, uh, but our next, we will have another budget discussion in August as well, so I see both meetings.
And the workshops are open to the public, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, discussion among the board members.
Actually, I have a question. And it's to David. The last, the last board meeting, or at the golf budget meeting, I got beat up pretty bad because I questioned on, I shouldn't even say I questioned. I wanted to understand how labor costs were calculated. And it's easy to look at labor and say, "Okay, this is where our expenditures are. Do we have too much overhead here with personnel? Not enough, et cetera, et cetera." And now I see this document, shame on me, because I didn't look at the contract. Where do I go from here to get a clearer understanding as to whether or not we are in fact entitled to understand what the labor costs are? Is this incorrect?
I've made notes from Mr. Halbig when he was talking and he's, and Tanya's got the handout. I'm gonna go back and review it and I'll get something to you.
Because you can go back into the minutes and you can hear, you can, you can hear the thrashing that went on and how I got beat up really bad. So I'd really like to find out.
I got you.
Thank you.
Mark, just to tell you, I talked to Tanya about a month ago and I said, "After the budget thing's done, I want to take a look at the contract to see if there's anything in there with Billy Casper that we want removed." So hopefully that we can take a better look at that and, when, their contract's up in October, is it?
No, no.
Or just we can change it anytime.
Anytime you want to consider a change or...
So hopefully we can do some more work on that once we get the budget done.
I'm not looking to change the contract at this point in time. What I'm just trying to do is be able to look at the budget and try to understand...
Nobody wants to change it right now, but we want to look at it. So, and you're correct and want to do that.
So you're gonna look into this and where do I go from there? Are you gonna contact me? Okay, thank you.
Kurt, you want to start out?
I'm fine.
You're done? Wally?
I got the proposal. We had a, a request come in from 100 people, signed it for a dog park. I was asked to take a look at it and Mike finished all the research on it. And it's not $200,000. It's, which I just told the other day, it's, it'll be $19,000, $20,000 complete whole deal. And so if you can put it in the budget, there's the stats, which I'll hand to you and bring it up, make everybody copies so it looks like everybody studied. And then it'll come up maybe the next one or the next meeting after that. That's the dog park. There's drawings and everything. We got the drawings ready, we got words in, all that stuff, like, just, just take a look at it. We hope, it'll have to come up for about one way or the other.
Anything else? Larry?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Mark?
No.
You're done, right? I got, I don't know if we can address this now, but I got several things, Tanya, that the MGA Halloween thing, can we talk about that and get something worked out? I guess there's a, Joe's here, president of the MGA, but I guess we have to, is that something we have to do formally?
Refresh my memory. What, the MGA wants to hold a...
The MGA wants to hold a tournament.
Okay, they want to hold a tournament. I knew Halloween weekend.
On a Halloween weekend, it's during our meeting, I guess, the day they want to run the tournament.
Okay, so our, our meetings are normally scheduled on the Friday of that week. It's October 28th. They start at 9:00 AM. Typically, we're done between 11:00 and 12:00 on a normal day. Is there...
Joe, do you want to come up there and explain?
If there's a conflict and the board wanted to change the meeting, absolutely you could, you could do so. Is that, is that the issue, Mr. President Gilpin?
Okay, Joe, just come up just for, so everybody knows that, how, what you guys would like to do.
Is there a conflict on the time of the meeting? Is that what it was?
I guess.
Yes, okay.
I'm Joe Branson, resident. There's a, there's a wedding at the clubhouse on Saturday when we normally would have this event. So it's not available to us. We have a band and dance and everything afterwards. So what we'd like to do is have it on Friday. It's an afternoon tournament and then a dinner and dance afterward. But it is a, a meeting day for the supervisors and so we want to make sure that we don't create a conflict. We don't want to have it a different weekend than Halloween weekend.
It's an afternoon golf.
It's an afternoon.
Yeah, it's an afternoon tournament.
So I'd like to see if we got a consensus here. Is it okay to, that the MGA can have that on Friday? Our meeting's at 9:00, so I don't know if it's gonna affect it.
It shouldn't affect us.
It's up to you.
You make the decision.
Joe, I, I think you could plan on having that on a Friday and I'll end the meeting if I have to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya, Kurt, about a month ago said something about our banking and we have an armored car come and get our money and take it and it costs us like five grand a year. Is that correct?
Yes, we have Loomis, but it's armored service that picks up our deposits, also picks up the restaurant and golf, you know, shop deposits on a daily basis. Except for holidays.
Is that something, have you looked into doing that differently? Because that's $5,000 or is that something we should have the armor do, or armored truck do that all the time?
Well, it's definitely recommended because we only have one TD Bank branch in Highlands County. When we awarded TD Bank, actually, this, this is a scenario. We, I think back in 2009, Riverside was the district, was awarded district banking. TD Bank took over Riverside. TD Bank closed an office in Sebring. When they closed the, the branch in Sebring, it was recommended to use Loomis. Loomis, what they do is they pick up our banking and they also pick up Highlands County, which is at the tax collector, and their banking and they take it to Lake Placid. I would never want to put one of my employees in that position. We have, and in November, you know, we handle over $2 million in a month and I'd never put my, one of my employees in a position to take banking like that to Lake Placid. So...
Well, the other half of my comment was that why don't we look at, for a local bank like Heartland or Flautula? I'm not suggesting employee taking money down to Lake Placid.
We are not planning on doing any type of RFP for banking right now. That is a, that is a task that could take up to six months to a year and could be very time-consuming. We're not looking at, at that right now, but that's something we could look at for future, definitely.
Okay. I'd like you to do that if you could. Not now, personally.
Can I ask that question? Why would it take such a long time to do an RFP to change your banking from one, like TD Bank to Heartland or somebody else?
Well, it's not, it's not that easy. We have multiple counts. I know golf has multiple counts with TD as well. So, you know, once, once the bank is awarded, it's all the administrative time in getting all the, the switch to occur between payroll, between administrative, between operating counts. So the awarding of the bid is not what the issue is. It's all the administrative time that goes into switching into a new bank. So, so that's something we can definitely look into. It has to be a qualified public depository in the state of Florida. A bank like Mid-Florida Credit Union, we cannot bank with. They are not a qualified public depository. So, I'm just giving examples, but we can look into doing an RFP.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on the RV park and the clubhouse renovation. I hope most of you realize that that's, those things will probably be taken out of the budget. So I've had a lot of comments that, how, how could this board with 1.2 million dollars in a clubhouse, we never, I don't think any of us considered that, but that's just the way it come out. So if you guys want, the RV park, it was a good idea, but it wasn't a, it started out at $300,000. When the person that talked about it, we thought, or it wasn't me, but I was in on a conversation that it was gonna cost 20, $30,000. Well, guess what? So I don't think this board will pass the RV storage thing either. So if you can relax, I don't think it's gonna happen.
I addressed that.
Yeah.
When that RV storage part of it's for all that is because a lot of people requested for it. And then, so we went into it and I dredged with a job doing the research on it, so I did. And it turned out there was 42 people, you saw the research, 42 people, according to Tenell, said they wanted to park in the RV storage area. But after I got into researching it, we found out that I found the other units around here that you can park our boats and so forth, that are relatively close. Some of them are empty, tangle which full, stuff like that. It didn't seem like the need was going down a little bit after it was being assessed. And so when Mike and I turned it over to the engineer, Mike and I had it picked out, we, we thought we would have an open area that we fenced in, that we could pull, people could pull their boats into and we would charge them for it to go through that. Well, when it was over, hell, it was cement roads, it was ponds, it was, I thought they were gonna put a swimming pool in there. So we discussed, we've been discussing it and so forth, common sense will tell you we weren't gonna build it, but for there for a while, it looked like the thing we wanted. So I, what I'm gonna do is ask the board to drop that and I'm gonna write to 42 people a letter and explain to them why we're gonna drop it and possibly go and tell them where you might take your boats and store them and so forth like that. Or you might build a house and put your own boat in your house, you know? But I'll, I'll take care of that. I'll get the names off of Tenell, I'll write him a letter, tell him, explain to him shortly what happened, that it's just not feasible for us to do it at this time. And maybe somewhere down the road, we can find that field out there and we can start pulling boats into and so forth like that. Right now, it's just not feasible.
Okay, thank you, Wally. And I also wanted to bring up, Wally brought up the water rates. It's something maybe we should look at, just listen to Tom and Bud. If we're so low now, maybe we ought to raise them again, because I guess we're way, I mean, I, I don't know much what I'm talking about, but it sounds like that we're well under the average of our water rates. And if we're gonna have some stuff coming up, we might as well, it's 2.50 a month, is that what it is, Tanya? Is what we've done the last, last year we did 2.50?
The last two fiscal years, two fiscal years, we raised it $2.50 for the base rate per customer per month. So what that means is that we, this money has been allocated just to put in savings. So it does go into our Euro Fund to the tune of about $540,000, I believe, every year. So we did raise those rates the last two fiscal years.
Okay, I, I just hoped that more, we could look at that for the future. Go ahead, Wally.
I did look into that, trying to find other ways to raise money instead of raising assessments and so forth. And yeah, we're, we're the cheapest in the area, we're making good money on it, we can put it into the fund, it can pay for projects and so forth like that. You just have to figure it back, you're minus 3650 units in here. If you just raise the rate $1, it would generate $45,000 a year. And, and you can move that up, that average up to about $7 before you can get to the average in the whole area. So it is a viable source. You're not gonna kill anybody at $100 a month, I mean, at $1 a month, that's $12 a year to generate that kind of money that we need for capital projects. So that's special, I've got the product on that.
And I want to thank everybody for showing up and we do welcome your comments, whether you believe it or not. Is that it? Meeting adjourned.